I want to thank Cecilia Ridler for joining me this afternoon. She is a candidate for the Board of Education of Frederick County. Cecilia, welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for running because I know it's not an easy gig. I can't even imagine what running for office is like today. Any office, but certainly I know the Board of Education is probably a pretty difficult one for a local election. How are you holding up?
It's fine, fine. I mean, it's very time consuming. I, in the beginning, I didn't think it would be this time consuming, but it's fine. And I remember, this is the Board of Ed, and I taught for 25 years, so I believe in the students and I believe that we should empower them to do the best they can in the school. And so my heart is with the students and that makes it a little bit easier to run. I'm not really advocating for myself, I'm advocating for them.
Yeah, yeah, I think when you're, yeah, you put yourself into that position, it makes it a little bit easier to, I guess, sacrifice the time that you're sacrificing. So appreciate that. So you said you were a teacher. Tell me about that experience for you.
So I taught for 25 years. I taught in, I teach high school. I actually had my master's degree before I decided to teach. I had worked in a couple of different science museums as education director, worked for the national parks, I did some research, and then I decided to get certified to teach after I had my master's and I was 38 years old. So I was certified in biology and chemistry. So I went right into the high schools and taught bio and chem. And it was much more of a challenging job than I ever imagined. I think unless you are in a classroom and you're teaching on a day-to-day basis and you're trying to engage students and you're trying to make sure that you teach the curriculum so they're ready to move on, there's nothing like it. And so it's difficult and it took me a number of years to try to at least kind of keep my head above water. But in the end, it's the best job I've ever had. And even though it was the hardest and I was always grading papers on weekends, the bottom line is I appreciate teachers and I know how challenging it is.
Yeah, yeah, I can imagine. And so when, was it recently that you were still teaching or you've?
No, yes, I've been retired for four years.
Okay.
And I tutored for a while. I did miss the classroom, but we, I decided to retire. I was department chair when I retired and that was a challenging job too. I had 25 teachers in my department.
Wow.
I was busy 24/7. And in Montgomery County, the department chairs observe, or they evaluate teachers, they support teachers. So not only was I teaching, but I was also supporting teachers. And so I decided to retire. I missed the classroom, I tutored for a while, and then I decided to run for the Board of Education. My children graduated from Frederick County Public Schools. We've lived in Frederick County since 1985. I really love Frederick, it's a charming city, it has a lot to offer. So I decided that I would run and I also want to support teachers here in Frederick County.
Yeah, yeah, I can understand that. One of the things that parents asked several times was about school overcrowding. Do you have any idea like what your thoughts are on what to do about some schools being, you know, way overcrowded and what a solution might be?
So I know, obviously Oakdale is one of the schools that they've talked about, that it's at 186% capacity and that is not a very good situation at all. I think the capital improvement plans for schools will eventually alleviate that. As far as what to do when you don't have the teachers or the classrooms to be able to make the class sizes smaller, it's a difficult situation. I've had up to 35, 36 in a chemistry class and we made it work, although it becomes, at some point it becomes a safety issue just to be able to get around to all the students. I think in this situation when the budget is really tight and if there is overcrowding, I, sometimes it's really good to have an extra hand in the classroom. I think they could very easily reach out to the community, at least for the first year, until they can get a handle on how to make classrooms smaller. I think parents would love to volunteer and work in the classroom and an extra set of hands always helps. We had, we had volunteers, some retired people who came into the classrooms and they were able to take students and do some remedial work, or if the students were absent, they could work with the students for a period of time while I was teaching. And it really makes a difference. So I think we could reach out into the community until we can, until the new schools are built, until we can figure out a way to reduce class sizes. I think teachers make it work. Not that it's fair that you have a class of 36, but I think we could enlist PTAs and try to, at high school level, oftentimes you can have a senior who doesn't want to take another AP class, but will go into your classroom and mentor kids. And I also had that and that was very helpful.
Yeah, those are some, obviously, good solutions that wouldn't cost anything additional into the budget. So you mentioned the budget, which I believe is about $900 million for Frederick County. And there are some cuts that have obviously just been announced to that budget. I think there was a $25 million shortfall. What do you think that you could do as a board member to help decrease the amount, you know, get it closer to a balanced budget so that all parties can, I guess, be, have everything they need to have? Or where do you think the cuts should come?
It's a tough question because you don't want to make any cuts in a school system because you want to make sure that the children are receiving everything they need to succeed because I'm all about student achievement. So as far as cuts go, you know, obviously they can't hire new teachers. I mean, that's, there's a staffing shortage, they can't do that. But I think the para-support, the para-educators can definitely be utilized. And so if we can't hire more teachers, I would definitely enlist the para-educators. A lot of them are doing instructional work anyway. I had a para-educator in my science department and we oftentimes asked her to be in the classroom with us. And so I think that would be one area that if we can't hire all the teachers we need, all the support staff we need, that we could definitely use special ed support staff to work with the teachers. We could use other instructional support staff to work with the teachers. And that may alleviate some of the problems that we have that we can't hire new teachers. So that's one area. It's really hard to see where you want to cut back because you have to have a teacher in every classroom. That's fundamental. And you don't want to diminish arts, you don't want to diminish music because those seem to be always the cuts that are made. So I guess I would have to look at, and I intend to go to the May 15th Board meeting to see where, where are they thinking about making these cuts? But I would definitely utilize the resources in the school to see if those could be utilized instead of hiring more staff.
Yeah, and when you say you can't hire more teachers, is that just because there's no room in the budget, there aren't applicable people applying to join, to be a teacher? What are your thoughts on that?
I think that they intended with this original budget, they intended to hire more teachers. They wanted more special ed teachers. They wanted to hire more English language learning teachers, to have more co-teachers in the classroom. And if the budget doesn't allow for that, which is, which is a problem and which is, I think we could look at the support staff we have now and utilize them in the classroom as instructional assistants.
Yeah, and I've heard that there are less and less people going to college to become teachers. Do you have any ideas of a plan to kind of, you know, sow our own roots, so to speak, to get teachers that are homegrown to stay in Frederick County?
So in my school, I had an instructional support teacher and she worked in the science department for a number of years. And she was 10, 12 credits shy of being certified to teach. And so we encouraged her to get her certificate and start teaching. I think one way that we can do is look at the support staff, encourage them to get certified to teach. And because they are committed to the school system, they often live in the community. Another thing we can do is look at citizens who have worked in other fields that maybe have spent 20 years or more working in another field and see if they want to end their career by being a certified teacher. Yesterday, I knocked on probably 50, 60 doors and the last door I knocked on was a gentleman who started teaching at Oakdale High School. And he said that he had his own business for over 20 years and he decided to get certified to teach. And he's doing that and he's also teaching right now on a provisional certificate, but he said he's going to end his, his, his working life being a classroom teacher. So I think we could look at people that aren't just fresh out of college, that have done other things and enlist them and bring them into the school system.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely think that some of the, I guess, requirements, you know, may need to be looked at. And if you have somebody, like you say, who has, you know, 20 years of experience out there in the world, it might be worthwhile to look at. A lot of parents seem quite engaged with the policy. I think it's 443 or 433. What is your stance on that policy?
Well, I mean, obviously I believe in equal access for all children in the school system. And in fact, in the 1800s, I was doing a little research about the history of education and it was all about equal access. They believed that the community was stronger and people could get along better if they accepted all children into the school system. Later on, in the 21st century, we're talking about high-quality education. So I obviously believe that we want to affirm and all children belong, public education is for all children. So I, I support 443. And I think most people believe that public education is for all children and all children have a right to receive the best, highest education possible.
Okay, great. The other question I think that parents were asking came up about the drugs on the school campus that there, you know, if you go into any school or at any sporting event, you can smell marijuana on kids as they pass by. Some kids don't use the restroom the entire school day because of issues there. Do you have any ideas on ways that that might be able to be fixed or remedied?
So I think, I really believe in programs for students and for teachers. I went through a lot of teacher training programs and when I worked in MCPS. I think there should be a lot of programs for the students about drugs, how they affect our body. And that should be an ongoing program within the school system. I also believe there should be a zero policy, meaning that if a student is found with drugs, there is, they receive some type of referral and they receive support to try to see what's going on. When I first went to Howard County, we, they had drug dogs. And the drug dogs would come in and the teachers would close their classrooms and they would find the drugs in the lockers and/or outside in the cars. And those students were brought down to the office and received support about what's going on and how we could remedy their use of drugs.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I know that's a tough one because that's kind of a social issue as well. So it's going to be tough for just the school to take that on without the community doing things too. What do you feel are the top three priorities for FCPS right now, as you see it?
So I've always looked at the superintendent goals and the Board of Education goals. And one reason why I decided to run is because I strongly believe in some of those goals. The first thing I think is really important is that we look at the achievement gap and how we can lower that achievement gap. There is an achievement gap among the underserved communities and there is in all school systems. In Montgomery County, we looked at the achievement gap and we really worked to lower that achievement gap. And that means that all students should achieve, all students should have a fulfilling high school career or K-12 career and have a mission, have a niche when they leave and know what they're doing. So one thing I believe that we need to lower that achievement gap, and we can lower that achievement gap if we look at chronic absenteeism, if we look at the graduation rate, if we make sure that all children are reading proficiently by third grade, if we look at the English language learners, make sure that they are reading by third grade. I also like a lot of the proponents of what the Maryland Blueprint is, they're advocating for. I believe that pre-K education is important. So by the time a child starts kindergarten, they are on the same, everybody's on the same playing field. And Head Start started that, but now the Blueprint is looking at making sure that there's public education for three and four-year-olds and by kindergarten, they'll be ready to, to move and to start reading. So that's really important. I also believe in teacher training and retaining teachers. I strongly believe that it's a very difficult situation for new teachers. And as a department chair, I was always trying to help new teachers and make sure that they stayed. And I think in the first couple of years, you want to make sure that the teachers have everything they need, that you give them support, that the department does a lot in helping them. We, I had peer review, meaning all the teachers would go into each other's classrooms and look and see how they could, what advice they could give them. I think that's really important. I think teachers need a kind of a career ladder themselves, opportunities to advance. National Board Certification is one that's really important. And I also believe that in the CTC, the Career Technology Center, not all students are ready to go right off to college, nor is it necessary. And I believe that we have a goldmine in Frederick with the Career Technology Center. And we want to advocate for students to take courses there and get certifications there.
Yeah, I think CTC is definitely an area that FCPS could expand on to allow more kids access to those programs. Another big, it seemed like, discussion was around cell phones in schools. If there was any way that, or any ideas you may have, I'm certain, being a teacher over a couple of decades, you have some thoughts on that. But any, any ideas on kind of remediating the interruptions that happen because of kids who have their phones in class?
So I believe that, that that, to advocate for kids to put their cell phones away is what teachers do individually in the classroom. The cellphone, I think taking away the cellphone when you see it is, is very difficult. And I, no one, we don't want anybody to take our cellphone away. So what we decided as a department is that we would allow kids to, well, as a school, allow kids to have their cell phones in between classes. At certain times of the day, they can have their cell phones. And when they got into the class, they would put their cell phones away and instruction would start. And nine times out of 10, if you said, okay, everyone, let's get class started, cell phones go away, let's say, you know, goodbye to the cell phones, put them there, and then you had an engaging class and the class moved forward, the kids, nine times out of 10, did not pick up the cell phones again. I also had a lot of, not a lot, but there were a number of review programs that I asked them to take their cell phones out. So Kahoot, if you've ever heard of it, is a great program where kids can use their cell phones and answer questions. And so if you can incorporate the cell phones in a constructive manner, that also helps a lot.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. You know, I know you, and you've talked a couple of times about being ready once graduation happens. I believe the last report was that there are 70% of our students graduating from high school or college and/or career-ready, which leaves, you know, kind of a large chunk of 30% are not. And I know you've talked a number of times about using, you know, other educators in the school to help with that. How do you, how do we increase that number of kids, you know, to the 80 or 90% once they graduate without needing to explode the budget? Or how do we do that in the future?
I think a lot can be done. Well, first of all, there are assemblies, school assemblies all the time. And then there are homeroom programs that teachers are responsible for. I think we can bring in community people to talk about careers and just start it very early, start it in, if it's in high school, even start it in middle school. You know, this is, there could be someone coming in and say, this is what I do, I am an architect and this is, this is what I love to do. And I think the more that students are exposed to thinking about what they want to do, what interests them. I don't think there is a test called the ASVAB test that all students in high school take. I think it's one test and you look at it and it's just not enough. I think we need to continually ask the kids the question, what do you want to do? How do you feel like you're going to earn a living? What interests you the most? What subjects do you like? But it has to be going ongoing throughout their middle school and high school career. And we can use the community for that. I mean, there are a lot of people that would relish coming into the schools and talking to students about that. I had a retired science teacher in my classroom and he was an M.D., Ph.D. And he would come in and he would help the kids with their projects and he would always talk about, you know, how he, he worked for the, well, he worked for the Marine Corps for a while, but then he decided to go off to school. But I think hearing from other people is really important for kids to kind of start figuring out, not, not just at the end of their high school career to think about it.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's kind of, I think that's overwhelming for kids at their senior year to be kind of focused on that if it hasn't been brought up before. The last thing that a lot of parents talked about were if there's a way for the school to help with teaching kids kind of basic life skills, like, you know, reading a lease or how do you rent a car, how do you write a check? I mean, I think these, some of these things were things we covered when I was in school. I don't think it's covered as much now. Do you feel like there's any place for FCPS to be in that kind of, you know, helping with ongoing life things with students?
I think absolutely. I mean, I definitely believe that. It used to be in home economics, there was a lot of life skills, balancing a checkbook. Now, a lot of schools have gotten rid of home economics. I believe there is time in the curriculum to do that. I think it could be a lunch activity where, in fact, we had lots of different lunch speakers that would come in. And so I think it could be infused into the school. It doesn't maybe necessarily one class, but I think it can be, it can be part of the environment that kids are learning about life skills. And again, it can be in a homeroom class, it could be an assembly, it could be in an after-school program, just like driver's ed is an after-school program. Parents may want them to take five classes on learning how to read a lease and sign a lease and what you're responsible for. So I definitely think it can be infused without being a separate class.
Yeah, I think those are good suggestions. Okay, I think that that is it for the basic questions that I was, that have been submitted to us. So I am going to hand you the floor to let people know why they should vote for you, Cecilia Ridler, on May 14th for the Board of Education. It's all yours.
Thank you. So I taught for so many different years. I taught all levels of biology and chemistry. And I was part of a pilot study the last five years that I was teaching. And what we did is we tried to break the tracking of students and I definitely don't believe in tracking. I think sometimes kids get into levels that they could achieve much more. So what we did is there, in my school, there was an on-level, on-grade chemistry and an honors chemistry. And then there's AP Chem, which was in the second-year chem. So we, we looked at some of the kids and we thought, well, you know, I think these kids could really have the ability, they have the math background, to take honors chemistry. And we could move them up. And we did that. And we moved them into an honors class. We taught honors-level chemistry. We did not dilute the chemistry, we wanted to make them ready for AP. And some of these kids, after we built positive mindsets with them, told them they could do it, they really rose to the occasion. We gave them lots of support, so we had high expectations and high supports. And that's really what I believe in. I believe that you want to elevate the education for all students. I hate to see kids in classrooms that they're bored, that they have lost their curiosity, they've lost their thinking that they're capable of doing anything. And so I'm all about achievement. And we, those kids that I taught, they moved on, some of them moved on to AP Chem. Another instance I had focused around the same thought is I had a pre-bio class when I first moved to Montgomery County. And it was a class full of students that had learning challenges. But I wanted to get them excited about bio the following year, I wanted to get them ready. So I always do lots of different activities. And at the end, the students knew that I was pretty new to the school. And at the end of the first week, a student came up to me and said, Mrs. Ridler, you're teaching us like we're the smart kids, but I have to tell you, we're not the smart kids, we're the dumb kids. And when that child said that to me, it was a ninth grader, I thought, you know, what have we done here to these kids? I mean, and so I really believe in achievement opportunities for all kids. And I think that's really the main reason why I'm running for the Board of Ed is I want all kids... Ed, is I want all kids to realize that they can achieve, and they can progress, um, and they are important to us.
Well, I think that that's a fantastic reason to be running, and I think that's, as parents, all we want, right? Our kids to be successful, uh, through high school and, and graduate and move on. So we appreciate you running and taking the time today, and wish you all the best on May 14th.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate your time, too, doing this.
My pleasure.
All right.